I'm on call, meeting's your order. Roll call, we have everybody except for Cheryl.
As far as I know Cheryl will be coming.
Okay. And additions to the agenda, looks like we have 130.
Who's to speak, Cheryl?
I'm sorry.
That's fine. So we have additions to the agenda, we have number four under personnel. Is that the only thing Bob?
That's it, that's only addition under personnel, number four.
Okay. How many can motion adopt the agenda with addition? We got a motion from Bruce.
I'll second it.
Second from Cheryl. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Approve and correct the minutes from the May 10th, 2016 regular school board meeting. You got those in your packet? How many can motion only approve the minutes?
Correct.
So I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Lou. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Okay, number six, financial report, the April 2016 treasury report, which is also in your packet. Bob, anything out of there?
Nope, nothing out of the order.
I think motion only approve the treasury report.
I'll second it.
So I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Heidi. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Number seven, with the added approval of the bills, we have the addition of April 2016 bills, and the May 2016 bills. Cheryl?
I had a chance to look at them this afternoon, it was pretty much business of beauty and looking on the ordinary, I would recommend that be approved in bills.
Okay, and I think the only piece that I would add is that the scoreboards are on this piece, the board is well aware of it, but they are in this, just so be aware, it's, we're using the school district because there's certainly no taxes on if we run it through to get the scoreboard, so the first piece of that is on in these bills.
Yep, that was the first.
Cheryl has seen it, but you guys are aware of this, bringing it up as a little different than what we typically have.
All right, where is that on?
That was on...
How much was it, Mark?
Sixty-five thousand.
Okay. Oh goodness. Careful, what words?
Yep.
Seven ninety? Okay.
And again, that's just, we're, we're getting the money for that, so it's, it's not coming out of our general fund.
So is that just a down payment on it, on this part?
Uh, they're, we're taking it in, in, in pieces.
Okay.
So it's not being all done in one ball soup, it's by the individuals, the kind of individual scoreboards as we go through it, they're getting ready.
And then the group of people that, that...
We, we got a check coming in as we write a check one off.
So they're equal there, aside from five thousand dollars a year that we...
Correct, the only thing that we're responsible for is the, what the board had agreed to is a five thousand dollars a year for five years out of our capital.
Okay. So do they have the money already?
Uh, they have a big hunk of money, I don't know if they have all of it, um, they had enough to, I believe, give us the payment for the first part.
We, we didn't pay for the full amount this time, it was capped down.
Cause they're not gonna be probably here for another couple of months or weeks.
Obviously, and I'm not sure when they're scheduled to come in.
But there's no question it's coming in.
There, there's no, yes.
Cause otherwise we have to fund it.
No, no, they're, they're raising the money, we're getting the money as we are paying out items. Yeah, I'm not, truly, they've raised enough, I believe that I'm not concerned that they're not gonna reach the...
They know what they're doing, it seems like in that area.
Yep.
And they have an upstairs account, yeah, that's... So I got a, a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
And a second from Lou. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda, review and consider authorizing the following 2015-16 school year career increments. This is by contract for professionals, we have a twenty-year increment for Charles Whaler, a twenty-year increment for David Wilkie, a thirty-year for Cheryl Bunham, and a thirty-year for Brad Skubel.
That's correct.
Will we can motion only approve?
I'll second it.
So I got a, a motion from Bruce and a second from Callan, any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Okay, so we move on to business, again, for anybody in the audience, if you have any questions regarding any business, I don't please raise your hand, and I will try to be student and call on you, so. Uh, review, uh, yeah, review, first reading, revised 2015-16 budget. And that is in your packet, that was given to us.
Correct. Uh, this is the revision of the fifteen-16 budget, I also met with our finance and budget committee, meet, or group today, and we've gone over this, and we've also gone over our tentative one that will come to the board next week for the sixteen-17 budget. So this one is just the first reading, uh, there could still be a few changes to this, depending on a couple of questions, and I'll go through those with Joan, and I'll let the board know what their, their question is. So we'll just go through this, take a look, ask any questions, but if you go home and questions pop up, just give us a call, again, and we'll come back to the board, there's no action today. If you take a look at our, um, this is arranged the way that we've done this in, for the past two years, if you take a look, it's by fund, one, two, four, five, six, seven, and eight, those are on the left-hand side, then you have the adapted, adopted fifteen-16 revenue, and then right next to it is revised fifteen-16 revenue, right? And if we continue, then the change is next, between those two, either positive or negative, and then you have the adopted fifteen-16 expenditures, the revised, and then the change. Okay, so I'm gonna go through each fund, one at a time, until we get down to the bottom of the sheet, if there's any questions, just interrupt me. In the general fund, you can see what the adopted general, or, um, the revenue was, and you'll notice that there's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-dollar change for that, and to the good. That particular change is primarily special ed. Uh, they're financing differently than what, than they would have in the past, um, I'm a little reluctant and a little worried to count on that too much, because they have, my first year here, I think they took a hundred dollars away from us for three years before I got here. So they can give us, but they have also been known to take it. So I'm, it's up right now, and that's where we're at, but again, they've come as far back as two or three years to revise money that they gave us and take it away. But it is higher than what we projected, but it's, um, primarily because of the special ed. All right? Um, then you take a look at the expenditures, and we did not, we're just a little bit lower than what we thought we would be as far as, um, expenditures that we, we cost out, and that was by twenty-eight thousand. Overall, in a nine million dollar budget, not too bad. All right? Uh, any questions on fund one? Okay, for fund two, that's food service, and again, food service is food service, those dollars are just to be used for food service, you can see what we, um, adopted for fifteen-16, and the revised one is, um, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety, and that's on eighteen thousand. And really, that was caused because we did increase a little bit for the money, but primarily the cost is because the, uh, the state is reimbursing us more now, all of our kindergarten kids, for instance, were reimbursed from the state. And I think more for selling more meals, as you're aware, the students, when they came in, didn't have as many concerns as they have in past years. So that's where the eighteen thousand is, and then if you look at what, uh, the expenditures were, we did spend about two thousand, two hundred, again, out of a five hundred thousand dollar budget, pretty close. Then for community ed, you can see what the adopted one was in fifteen-16 for revenue, they did bring in four hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-one, that's a revised number, and that's primarily because of fitness center and POS. The POS program has become extremely good, um, it's being used a lot more than we thought would when we put this in a while back, um, so those are the two primary reasons on why it's around forty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars. Uh, they also did spend more than they thought, um, they adopted at forty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy, and they spent four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and three, um, that's primarily because of the showers that they put in. That was over twenty thousand dollars that they had done that. Okay? For the capital, and for the, um, for fund five, that involves our health and safety also. Okay, so it's capital, health and safety, deferred maintenance in that one groupie. The adopted one was five hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-six, and we brought in six hundred and eighty-two, eight oh four for the revenue, that's a hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and eighteen more, that's primarily because we got an E-rate rebate, we didn't spend all the money for E-rate, but we did get the E-rate, uh, rebate, we got some rebates for the energy HVAC stuff that we did, uh, also, the basketball piece runs through this, so that's another sixty-five thousand to there, um, and some of we did do it in insurance recovery, that's also, we didn't know that that was coming up, but that was also put in there. So those are all the categories that kinda caused us to be over more than what we thought. As far as expenditures, um, we did spend twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars, but I do believe, I know what that primarily is, I, I don't think, and I didn't get a chance to check, double check with Joan on this, that may be of the gyms that were refinishing, the high school gym that were refinishing, because if we were gonna do it last spring, we didn't get that done before school started, we're gonna do it in June, so that may change if we're doing it on this budget, or it may stay the same if we move it to next, the next year budget. But either way, the funds are there, but I think that's what the twenty-eight thousand is, so I think we're pretty close.
Well, that was like twenty-five of it, wasn't it?
It was twenty-five, correct.
Yeah, I'm certain that's what, what happened to us on that one.
Yeah, so I think that's what it is, but I do wanna double check, so if there's a change, it probably, it could be on that one, in the capital. Um, debt ser-, yeah, quick.
So we're, so we're gonna still do it?
Yes, it's, the only difference will be on whether or not we carry those money, those monies over to next year's budget, take it out of that, versus this year's budget and take it out, and then if we did it out of this year's budget, it would be twenty-eight thousand, there would be twenty-five thousand less than that.
Right, okay.
All right? Okay, for debt service, that's just the debt that we owe on the building, of course, that's all levied, we don't have any control over that, the state brings in, we bring in the levy, and the state adjusts it as they need to. So if we get too much money kind of in our account for that, then they pull that money out and they reduce the levy for the community. So we don't have a lot of control of that. And also the trust fund, uh, we don't really have a lot of control, what they virtually do is they spend the interest rate on the trust fund, my school has used that a little bit, um, for scholarships and other things.
What about number six?
Building.
Oh, sorry, uh, building construction, um, the fifteen-hundred is interest that we've made on our money, um, we ended up spending, we, we adopted, we were gonna spend a hundred, one million, two hundred and fifty thousand, we didn't, we ended up revising it down to seven hundred and twenty-six. And I'll get to a little bit more on that when we get down to the lower ones. So we've got, we've still got about nine hundred, a little over nine hundred thousand in that account for projects that we still are going to be done. All the money so far has been spent on projects that we talked about, there was only one change to that when we did that, and we did, we decided to use some money to fix the track that was going to go towards, uh, that fire lane paving. So eventually we'll get that done either way, but it, it could come out of the facility money, might not depend on what it is, if not, we'll bring it out of our capital, deferred maintenance. So and I'll, I'll give a little more of an explanation for the capital when we get down, there's more of a explanation here. Uh, when we get down to positive or deficit budget, it's just what we had projected, so if you take a look at the general, what I've been trying to do, and what I've explained to the board in the past, is that I've been trying to put anywhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand into our reserve fund, every year. Okay, um, for this particular year, we had planned on about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand going into reserve fund. At this point, again, because of the changes above, the fact that we got more money for the special ed and we didn't spend the twenty-eight thousand, we're at three hundred and forty-thousand, three hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. Okay, so we're further ahead on that. Now again, that special ed money could disappear pretty quickly, if you take that off, then we would have been pretty close to where we were at. Okay? Uh, food service, you can see the difference there, we projected that we would put, um, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixteen into our reserve fund for, for, uh, food service, and instead, because of the above reasons, thirty-four thousand is going in. Okay, so you can see how that works, community ed, we projected that we'd be able to put a thousand dollars, eighty-five, and we put thirty-nine hundred and forty-eight dollars in. And the capital, we had expected, at least out of our capital, to deficit spend this last year. But again, for the reasons above, those rebates and all those things, instead of deficit spending forty-seven thousand, we're actually putting a hundred and twenty-seven thousand back into our capital. Yeah, that's a good thing, because we've been running out of pretty weak capital, um, reserve fund. You know, we've been, you know, anywhere between eighty and a hundred thousand on that, and one bad thing can eat that up pretty quick. So we'll be able to build that up a little bit, and there's still an awful lot of things that we need to get done with our capital, so we'll see how it goes, but at least for now, there's, for building construction, again, we predicted that we'd spend a hundred, one million, two hundred and fifty thousand, and instead, we spent seven hundred and twenty-four Okay, resolve it. Uh, same with the building construction, or the debt service and the trust fund, those kind of, again, the debt service, the state takes care of that. The money's levied, it goes into a fund, we spend our, or pay for our debt, and if we get too big with reserve fund, then the state knocks it down some. So if you take a look at the actual fund balances, you've got the actual fund balances that we projected in the column on the left, and the actual fund balances that we're at here. Now, the good thing about this is that we went from five hundred and ninety-three to nine hundred and thirty-eight, and that's on assigned. So that's the direction that we wanna go, and as I've explained to the board before, my projections are that we will go up to a point, and then very quickly, after we reach a certain limit, we'll start to go down at a much faster rate, and my goal for my budget is to get to the ten, end of the ten-year referendum.
So at the end of the ten-year referendum, do you recall what kind of reserve we were looking at? If I remember some numbers, I thought it was like three or four hundred.
Yeah, it would be about four hundred to, to five hundred thousand, at, at the year before the referendum ends.
Right, so our issue is, we're going up.
Yep.
We're gonna hit this larger amount in the next two, three, four years.
Yep.
To resist the excess spending and use it up, because we can't make it to the referendum if we don't hold it.
If you do not build your reserve fund up high enough, you risk falling short of the ten-year referendum. And you have to remember that, at the end of the ten-year referendum, you can still really keep the levy that you have in place right now by state law. But in ten years, it will not be enough, it simply won't be. And there's, you know, there's a lot of things that'll happen between now and end of that ten year that, you know, the district needs to plan for.
If you were to guess, how high do you think it's gonna go? Are we gonna get up to a million, five, somewhere in there?
Yeah, it's higher than I, I, right now, it looks like it's higher than what we're, with the new software package we have, we're waiting to input all of this stuff, cause we've completed all our negotiations and all that, they're downloading that stuff back into the program, once that happens, then I'll be able to give you solid projections on where I think that will be. But again, it's hard to say, because so many things fit into that, negotiations, you know, how much expenses go up, all of that is, is part of that, so...
We haven't got special ed, the state could come for more money and get themselves in trouble again, there's a whole bunch of factors, but it's a little scary to try and make sure we don't get, we need to get the amount to make it to the end of the ten year, kind of, in my mind, that is a really important factor.
Yeah.
I think if we told the public, we should be able to done this for ten years, even though many of us weren't here potentially when that happened, it's still our goal to hit the end of that ten-year budget that we asked the taxpayers for.
Yeah, and we have to wait, I mean, again, the state will come out and they could give us more additional dollars, but they could also say, no, we're not gonna give you anything. So all of that plays a part in it, and whether they give us money or not, we're still negotiating with groups. That doesn't stop, because the state doesn't give us dollars, so we need to prepare ourselves well enough so that we can do it, and I've mentioned to the board, I don't think that we're overpaying any of our groups. You know, I think that's something that we have to look at and continue to be competitive with other area schools.
And then with that, you know, yeah, it's nice to say that we have a healthy fund balance, but if we're not meeting the needs of our children, then we have an issue there too. So there's a fine line to determine what that fund balance should be or what it shouldn't be, because if we're still slashing or cutting programs, and we're not meeting the needs of the children, then we're gonna run ourselves into trouble that way too, so. It's, it's that fine line of how much is too much, or how much is not enough, but...
And for next year, as the board is aware, because you've taken a look at my suggestions for reductions, we're reducing less than we ever have, um, we're staying pretty much intact to where we are, so I would look at it as not really a lot of reductions at all for, for next year. In fact, we've added six period classes back because of the very thing you're talking about, Mark, which is the need of our students. That's why we've added some math classes back, and we're gonna have to, as we, as we work on the action steps for our strategic plan, which I'll mention that, we have a meeting set up with my administrative team next week, then we're gonna look at things, and as much as, then, I'm happy to see us point in this direction, we may need to spend some of this, these dollars in order to meet some of the action steps to meet the needs of the students. So that'll all certainly come back to the board, um, when I talk with our finance committee today, I mentioned that as we get our action steps done, then we'll have a work session, bring those action steps to the board, might even reconvene, you know, that strategic plan committee possibly, and bring it forward, and then before, you know, we do anything. Remember, the action steps aren't gonna be approved by the board, but we certainly want the board's input or other people's input on how best to meet needs of our students, and how best to meet the goals and objectives of our strategic plan. And that take, that will take conversations with our staff, cause they're still the best resource that we have to say, does this work, does it not work, do we need to change what they're doing? So all those conversations have to take place as we start to adjust. I'm grateful in that now we've finally come to the point where we can discuss adding things, instead of just constantly looking at ways to tighten up the budget.
We, we don't necessarily have stabilized enrollment either, so for every two, ten students lost, um, if, if that would happen, hopefully we can go the other direction, it's a lot of money.
Well, I can tell you what...
Twenty, it's a lot of money, from the time you came to present, I believe from the time that I got on the board to today, we're down, cost sixty-five students.
Yeah.
Times roughly six thousand dollars is, that's sixty-three, about four hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Well, that's half of this reserve.
I, I can tell you that in my reports, um, the board will be told we're up five students from what we started in the school year, so.
Well, it's a positive direction, we need to go that way.
Yeah, that's a good thing. Any other questions up to this point? So you can kinda take a look on the left-hand side about what we projected and adopted, and where we're at with the fund balance. Uh, when you take a look at the capital, the, the general fund is pretty self-explanatory, food service is pretty self-explanatory, same with community ed. Any questions on any of those? When we get to the capital, health and safety, we broke out a couple things, operating capital only, you know, that's starting every day, that's not the health and safety, remember that, the health and safety, deferred maintenance now is being, it's going away, and we have our long-term ten-year plan, that's in its place, which really is a great benefit to the district. So when we take a look at the, the operating capital, and we only have seventy-five thousand in our reserve fund, that's what we projected, we are going to be higher than that, we're gonna be a hundred and fifty-three, but I would say that we have to be a little careful with that, because we're also saving, we haven't broken that out, we've been saving money for a new tractor, for instance, for a thousand dollars a year, well, eight thousand of that is for that tractor, and there's other things that we've been saving for, we'll, um, Joan and I will eventually break that out, so it won't show up here, it'll be in its own savings kinda account, uh, in the future, but at least for now, that's not as high as it is, it's more, probably closer to the a hundred thousand mark, which is good, cause that's more than what I probably have had for a reserve fund, but that, so it's a little deceiving, that is not here is what it is, cause again, we're saving for various things, so that we don't get hit with a big budget item all at one time, so we don't have to spend twelve thousand dollars on a tractor in one year versus we'd save for it over three years. So just be aware of that. And then the tech levy, we've got money in there, you know, we're starting to save for another rotation of computers, the next one is for students, so it's gonna take us for three years to save the money for that next rotation, and plus, some of that is in there because we didn't hire our integration, uh, person right away. So that's why, but that tech levy account will continue to build for the next three years, cause we can carry the money over, but again, so that we don't have to take the computers out of our capital budget, it's, it's out of there, it's in the budget, and we're saving for it. Okay? Then you have the building construction, and again, we'll have about nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, we've got some big items yet, there's another roofing project, the walls of the elementary, at least the one section, front wall by the playground, we're looking at replacing that, not this summer, the next summer, we have some planning, we have to do that, it's gonna be more complex than we thought, there's a number of things that we have yet to do in, in that, and again, we're not gonna use that money for anything that we did plan on for the facility. So that's still, that's what's left out of, I think, two million, thirty thousand. And then the debt service, and then the trust fund. Questions on that? And again, this is the first reading, there is time for any questions, though certainly there'll be a time to ask questions at the next meeting, I might suggest, if something comes up, give me a call, so we can make sure that we answer your question to the whole board, cause one person thinks about it, there might be other people that think about it. You know, the thing I'm, I'm happy with is that it's going in the right direction right now, and, and we just need to be really careful, I just know it's a lot easier to spend money than to save it. So, um, right now, I think the budget is going the way that I had hoped and projected that it would. Well, we'll be bringing the 2016-17 budget to the board for the first reading at the next meeting, you'll adopt the revisions at the next meeting, the first reading of the next year's 16-17 budget at the next meeting, first reading, you won't have to do anything, but we do have to have that budget adopted by the last meeting in June. So that'll come to the board next.
I think you did a good job.
Well, it's going in the right way.
It's been four years, so we put together four years, that's why we start looking at this ten-year thing, four years to get here, three years maybe to, to get this fund where it needs to be, and when we start going down, it's like it exponentially increases, and so you gotta be really careful.
It goes down pretty quickly, because again, we have a lot of things that will change between now and the end of this thing, and we need to, you know, I think, example, again, I'll bring it back to negotiations, you know, we need to be competitive with other school districts around here. Right now, my worry is that because of the budget cuts, because we've run on such tight strings, that we have fallen behind, and we need to do our best to be competitive with other groups, and, and, you know, I'm not, I don't want a savings account that's gonna get us forever, and we're gonna just continue to build it up. I do believe that we need to get to the end of the ten years, and at the same time, try to put a budget together that will meet the needs of all of our bargaining groups and, and the needs of the students at the same time, and it could be a role-playing piece that you put in place, because when you add twenty thousand dollars to your budget this year, and it's every year for the next ten years, that's no longer twenty thousand dollars you added to your budget. It's a lot more than that, so...
But from projections, um, you would think that we should be kind of anticipating, we back to talk to the taxpayers about an operating referendum in about ten years, would you say?
Yeah, I mean, unless you go flatline with... Yeah, I mean, unless you go flatline with all your budgets, which you're not gonna be able to do, nor would it be right to do, you're going to eventually get to the point where the seven, if, if you don't wanna make cuts, that you're going to have to go back to the community. We're not by far the highest district in our area for what we're levying for our, our community. Believe me, I don't wanna levy any more than anybody else does. You know, we just need to be really careful, we need to run an efficient budget, get the best bang for our buck, meet the needs of our students and our staffs, and run the best program we can within those budgetary constraints.
And then we also have to look at, you know, pretty soon, our big debt is gonna be off, two thousand and nineteen, I believe it is?
Yeah, it's, it's about two thousand and twenty. I, I think part of what could come up, and I know that some people have asked me about the facilities, whether we're gonna do that. I think when the administrative team gets together next week, and we start talking about our strategic plan, that's where that probably will pop back up. In the end, the board will have to look at, at least what the administration is looking at, and we'll probably have to get that committee together if, if that's what we're gonna do, and, and start that discussion again. But yeah, so a lot of our debt goes off in two thousand and twenty.
At that point in time, we can start looking at maybe what can you do for the building, you know, mechanically or whatever, and we have that reserve center too, that we, you know, need to look at and figure out what we wanna do with that, and how we wanna incorporate that into the, into the organization, and... So those are a lot of things that, but we can start planning already. Like I said, two thousand and twenty is not that far away, but if we can start planning already for that part of it.
The, the good, the good news is with the capital and the ten-year maintenance dollars that we get now, we're going to be able to get some, some things caught up. We've been running off such a tight budget for years that things, when that happens, you put it off a year, you put it off a year, and it only gets worse. You continue to put it off, but then when you start to try and get caught up, then that's an adventure in itself, because it's not easy to get caught up in a couple of years when you've let things slide for a number of years. So that, I think the ten-year plan will really help us upgrade in a lot of areas that we have not been able to do that. I'm excited about that ten-year plan, I think that's gonna give us the opportunity to look at possibly putting another small boiler into the elementary school, get rid, rid of one of our bigger efficiency ones. But that's another discussion for us to have. There, you know, when I bring something up, I don't want people to go, well, Hewitt's gonna put a boiler into that school. No, that's not what I said. I said we need to start talking about that to see if that's something that we can do. But at least we have the option to be able to do some of those things without having to go back to the people and, and ask for more money from them. We do it within our own budget. Any other questions? At least for now.
Anybody have any questions up there? Personnel, review and consider approval or resignation from Kim Johnson, paraprofessional effective May twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen.
We hate to see Kim go. She's got another opportunity that she's taking, that is a good opportunity for her, and we hate to see it. That's another reason that we try, need to try to get as competitive as we can.
We got a motion from Heidi.
Second.
Second from Randy. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, and carry. Review and consider approval of a resignation or...
Resignation or?
Resignation.
Or.
Or.
My, my magic typing fingers.
Riley Decker, teacher effective May twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen.
Yeah, we certainly hate to, to who's, Riley, he's done a great job for us, he has another opportunity, I believe, outside of education, if I'm not mistaken. And it's an opportunity he wants to give a, give it a shot, and we wish him well.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Lou.
Second.
Second from Cheryl. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Both same sign, and carry. Review and consider approval of Joan Runnigan as an integrational program paraprofessional July eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, through August twelfth, two thousand and sixteen.
Yeah, this is, this is paid for through our integration plan.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
I got a motion from Mark and a second from Kellum. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Number four, review and consider approval of the resignation of Cal Anderson, van driver effective May three first, two thousand and sixteen.
Again, Cal has done a fantastic job for us, he is retiring.
He had, you know, he worked for me, we, when I worked at the district, he was eighteen years driving a van.
Yeah, so we certainly appreciated his service, and, you know, finding van drivers is not easy, so. But we wish him well.
Yes.
I make a motion to Lou.
Second.
Okay, so I got a motion from Lou and a second by Cheryl. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, and carry. All right, that leaves us two informational reports, administration report from Robert Hewitt.
Okay, just a few things quickly. Sorry to leave, last week is school, last week with students is Thursday, last week with staff is Friday. Graduation on Sunday, I thought went very well. So we graduated another group of students, and we wish them well as they go on to further adventures. It was a beautiful day for this ceremony. Girls, and I don't know all they're doing, I have not heard, girls are playing in softball playoffs today, it's double elimination now. They have one game if they win today, if they lost the first game, then they would play a second game, but I have not heard all they're doing. Our boys have a doubleheader today, they're playing Holden Ford probably right now, Cathedral a little bit later, and they start the first game in their playoffs on Saturday. We had a food service audit today, another adventure, almost as adventurous as our, as our Office of Civil Rights audit. We have a few things that we need to clean up, that we need to revamp, but nothing major. We have to do some work on our wellness policy, so we're gonna wait till we start the school year, I'll put a wellness committee together, that's one of the things we need to do, we'll make it active, but we're looking for some guidance from MDE on what that policy needs to look like, there's some changes that we need to incorporate. So we just had that today, and they, yesterday and today, and they finished it today. June first, I talked, administration is gonna meet and start putting action steps into the strategic plan. I mentioned in that we'll have a, a work session at one point or another where, where we bring the board into our discussions on what we're looking at, and then bring it to the, the board, and, and add a board, actual board meeting, so that we inform the community on where we're at and what we're looking at changing. FFA certificate of appreciation, I'll just pass that on, that's for the board. Enrollment, at this point, don't think we're gonna get a change in the next two days. We are up seven students in our elementary. In our early childhood, special ed is up considerably from where we started, it started at thirteen and we're at nineteen. Middle school was up one, high school was down three, but we still made a net gain of five students for the year, from the start of the year to the end of the year, which is a good thing. Okay, one last thing, we met with MDE concerning our Q-Cop plan, we're meeting tomorrow to make hopefully our last revisions.
Hope so.
Yeah, we're, we're all hoping so on the committee, but the committee's meeting, we've got a half-day schedule, they came in, we had a lot of good discussion, they gave us some information, we hope to put it all together tomorrow, then resubmit it to MDE. Hopefully they'll approve it, once they approve it, then it needs to go into the teachers' report. And then if the teachers approve it, then it will come to the board for a final vote. If everything goes the way that we're hoping, as we have just found out at that meeting, we are eligible to start those funds and get those funds from the state. Again, it's not a levy, we're not levying the community at all, these are funds that come strictly from the state. We'd be able to start using those funds next year. So we're excited, but we are anxious to get it done. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other further sharing? I got a motion from Lou. Reiterate. And a second from Heidi, any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, and carry.